We're doing our.
Yes.
Okay, we'll call it at seven oh seven with apologies. Uh gender review doesn't have anything they need to add subtract or edit to the agenda. Right, seeing them will move on to public comment. If anyone wants to public comment, wants to comment on anything not already on the agenda, now is the time to do it. If you have an agenda item, please wait for that. Anyone? Yes. Name and who you are, and if you're representing any particular group.
I'm Pam Custer and the social studies teacher here at the high school. I do have comments that I wanted to share regarding this event, but I have to first state that I am not a resident of this district.
And can we wait until the Charles district, we'll talk about that? Is that okay?
Yes, I just wanted to, I didn't know if I would be allowed to, since I'm not a resident, so I thought I'd share that.
You are an employee and that would qualify for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments on either? And we'll move right along then to reports. My school breath is eating alone tonight.
Nope.
And then everywhere in. Speaking of.
That's exactly. Uh I just wanted to say we have on tomorrow's agenda, a familiar topic. Uh graduation requirement for community practice is coming back. It's going to be advisory, but you know, this is something that long has been talked about in Hanover High School. The board has reviewed it in twenty eighteen, so look forward to more of that. Um they've also um just been looking at the uh examine the equity committee is looking at time on and seeing how the school uh and students might be able to use their voice to talk about New Hampshire from the public funding. And um and then I think you heard about the pledge motion. Uh where Mr. Murphy brought formal language. Um and is encouraging people to think about what values do we stand for at Hanover High School? So we had a couple of short meetings, so the agendas have been, as I'm sure. Uh and I understand, I just want to tell everybody to public, I hope you school members are taking tours of the schools and getting uh council member to follow around, so. Yeah, it's very exciting to have, so thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Anything for Linda and her acting step as. Yes, Renee.
I just got one of those emails today from the council and it like brightened my day. I'm so excited. It's I've been spun on my list, but I think it's helpful that somebody proactively reaches out. Mm hmm. It actually gets it on the calendar. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from Linda? Very much. To the RMS principals report, Anissa, what's going on over there?
Good evening. My apologies for the delay in my report. I had a little bit of writer's block this weekend and then I thought like embrace the middle school and just do six, seven. And then I, as I was working on it, like, oh, my gosh, that's a lot of things, but I think it captures our school and the fun of middle school. Um which, yes, I am um. One of the tasks that I am helping out with currently is serving as our student council advisor. And that was, we were having like that great middle school discussion about spirit days. What do they want to have? A six, seven day, sixty seven day of school. Other than fun things like that, we're doing a lot of great work. Uh we have, as I mentioned in the report, we uh have formed an MTSS uh team this year and we're working through uh formalizing those tiers of support, uh something that you all have identified in the um strategic plan. Uh certainly, we're doing our regular grade level budget meetings. Just this week, uh as I, we attended team meetings, we talked about the survey, which you all will look at this evening, just thinking about ways and strategies that we could use to shift our practice to better meet some of the items that are uh mentioned in the survey. There are no questions?
Yeah. Hi, I'm just having a little PTSD at item number sixty four about the brain. Are they still creating those? Representations of their.
It is, the practice has shifted slightly, but yes, students do create some sort of it doesn't have to be a model that their parent goes out and buys lots of supplies for.
No, I didn't touch it, but it just was made out of bread dough and it kind of spanned it overnight. It was a very big brain. I don't know. Something you don't forget about your children's return.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Well, it was great to see that we got a blue ribbon.
Yeah, yeah, that's the, that was my, yeah, last little bit that we um had, we're selected, I knew uh prior to Tim's leaving, we had been selected as National Blue Ribbon uh School, um the application that we completed last March. And then the beginning of September, it's formally canceled as a program, um but the state of New Hampshire has invited us to a dinner uh December second, so we'll be attending. Yeah.
Anything else for Vanessa? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Black, good news and the sixty seven methods.
And then seven, and just then thirteen.
So, Anissa, did you want us to talk about the handbook at all, or is that just?
Do you have an action item later, do you have questions about it?
Any questions for the handbook? Anything you want to highlight for that?
No, it's pretty close to what we saw before, I believe.
Gina?
Uh not a question, but I've got the update on the injury was great, which uh we talked about that last time and there's a blank page five.
Oh, I don't know why.
At least one I saw. Yeah.
Yeah, I know that what I looked at wasn't, but maybe in somehow in translation.
It just be a page break. That's monkey. Okay.
That's what I think it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a big show. I just wanted to flag it.
Okay, I will double check that and we'll get up on the website if you all agree.
Neil. So did you want to talk about the handbook now or when it's up for?
We're open to discussion. We've talked a lot about.
Um so I do have a question based on two things, one, what we uh heard from the last meeting and secondly, because some of us have been getting requests from parents outside of the district listening to participate in our sports program. And I noticed under eligibility, there's the statement there that says students who reside in Hannover or Norwich who are home, who are homeschooled or attend another school may participate in athletics at Richmond Middle School. Is that? Am I correct to read that that would allow students from Lyme to permanently?
I think.
That's how I read it.
Yeah, I think what it, what it could be is there maybe should be another comma after attend another school, comma. So I think it's more if you are a resident of Hannover Norwich, which you go to a private school would still qualify to be a athlete at RMS, not students who live in other towns besides Hannover.
Right. You know, care, so you end up.
Why are we, it seems to have just popped up for this memory. Why are we making such a big deal unless it's not allowing line to participate in RMS even if, don't they just pay a fee even and?
So the argument that I heard is that they not, they're not taxpayers or contributing to.
First, they feel like they did at HPR, right? They always, they would be, so wouldn't that be a revenue opportunity for the district just to charge some fee?
The argument there and speaking off the cuff would be that there are several schools that attend sending districts to the high schools, let's just say, Heartland. And then what about capacity? What happens? Make sure there's enough people on the team and like we talked about the four chairs, just now, moonless liability type issues as well as coming to play.
Sure.
Uh Neil.
I would like to make a recommendation to the chair that we actually talk about that issue at a future board meeting, preferably the next one.
Any other insights, Kelly?
Yeah, I, I. So I, I think um we have a lot, I'll just state, I agree, I think we should have talked about it more fully. I think there are a lot of um potentially unforeseen items that we need to discuss, insurance, busing, there's a lot of things that might go into that that we would need to look into if we were going to entertain that um space, all kinds of things, and it's different for different sports. There's just a lot of different things to consider, so. Yeah, I, I agree, and I don't know if that holds up, improving this. Now I know they're eager to get it in place because basketball is starting, so um I think we may need to approve this as is without live students for the upcoming season. And then revisit it the future. It means that.
We have also heard that there were live students that signed up through the RMS order to sign up their athletes for basketball this year, which I think was made pretty clear that that was not the intent. And that we had also heard from Hannah Workleins and Rec that Lyme had plenty of players last year for their own team, so maybe this has had more players than the Hannover team did. Yeah. Any other thoughts? And this, do you have any thoughts on this?
Not that. I appreciate that um you all have the policy that you have in place that allows uh students who may be homeschooled, but our district or attending homeschool, but our district residents to participate. Um even before this went for the voters, I remember having a conversation with a crossroads parent who lives in Hannover and wanted to make sure our most sports move forward, that our child would still be able to participate. And I said, yeah, that follows our policy. And I think that's key for me is really to think about what our policy is, how follow that.
Well, that also gets into like guidance from the state. We're not, we're not, we're innovative in that particular regard.
Right.
I'm hearing thoughts that we can talk about this next month. And so we will add that to the agenda item. But I, I do think given the time that Kelly mentioned, the timing for this year seems problematic at minimum, given that they're having, they've already done science for a couple of weeks, they've ordered on your doctors. That's what for us to play, they have tryouts in a week and a half. So that might be a little challenge to do this academic year, at least for winter sports. Right, are we good to move on? Anything else on the handbook since we're talking about it?
It's just the athletic handbook, right?
Yes.
Sorry, can I ask?
Neil, one more time.
I think when we heard from the athletic director last week, um we that for some sports, there is a tryout and a potential cut.
That is true for basketball, at least something they've announced.
Is that outlined? I will admit that I skimmed the policy pretty quick. Is that included in the policy, in this, sorry, in the handbook?
Specific to basketball, it was an email to parents in terms of how the structure would work in terms of tryouts and things like that. In terms of the actual handbook, I do not recall specifically if it's in here. Am I hearing, and I'm not to jump too much, or am I hearing, or are you perhaps athletic affairs combination, have some insights and thoughts into this process?
Uh I, I mean, I just, I, I think about it from a transparency perspective. I wouldn't want somebody to think that they were you know, uh getting one thing and end up with another. And so if we know that that is the the practice, um at least for some sports. I don't know, we need to call them out by name, but just, you know, simple sentences that says, you know, some sports require tryouts and students may be cut.
There is some language even in communication about tryouts for given season. Again, it's on page three. Last sentence of communication.
If there's any other trials in the end of the first paragraph. So Anissa, we can have Brandon come to the December meeting, we can talk through more of these things. Anything else on this? Maybe this, because we've asked, we've had delays on this two months in a row now. That we should probably try and make a motion this tonight since sports will be starting in a week and a half. I guess we'll move on. Thank you, Anissa. Moving on to the high school principals report, I see there's a vignette as well, Julie.
Yeah, so I'm just waiting time for the vignette. You have the report. If I were to point out anything on it, I feel like it's a hard to be a teacher at Hannover High School in your first or second year. And our music people who are all brand new have knocked it out of the park with their fall concerts, so that was exciting to see. Um and then in terms of the sports piece here, as you can see, participation is high, um and it probably is keeping up with the, all the new students we have this year in terms of numbers are all participating, if you want to look at it that way in winter sports, so. Um, yeah. Busy place, lots going on. We're really proud of this program that's been developing, so I'd love to have them chat with me about it.
Anything specific to Julie before we have our vignette? Let's see, thank you, Julie. Folks want to watch what's going on. Um we're gonna turn the screen on a girl for this, be all minds.
I'm good.
You can help introduce yourselves as well?
I want to say I have to leave the meeting early. It's not personal, so. I will stay as long as I can.
Great. Uh I'll introduce myself. I'm Matt Buck. Um, I'm a ESOL teacher here, and then I also um kind of coordinate aspects of the hub, that's the peer tutoring center, and I'm, I'm also now wonderfully connected to some of the form one portion of our ELOs that are available here at Hannover High School, so please.
Yeah, and I'm Julie Cook. I'm new to the position this year, but I'm the art team and case manager, so there's lots to me tier two intervention program. And um also for the personalized learning program department. Um which ELO is a growing part of, and I'm super proud to have you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Louis Spango. I'm a new teacher to Hannover High School, and I'm the extended learning opportunities coordinator.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah, sure. I put this together and not that you can necessarily read it, but I made this actually for the MTSS. Um also to explain to people what my job is when they ask. And then conferences lately and I'm the P L coordinator. And so um this is our department, which includes uh P and health, which are social, emotional learning, the help hub. And the ELOs as well as um we have study strategies course and academic coaching, which is an intervention um at the tier one level, and this is the program I work closely with, the response to need, which is at risk twelfth graders, a night intervention program, single day, short term interventions, uh special ed referrals. They, they spend time with me, um and then in school suspension, restored justice. Also, at the tier two level, we have five oh four and um ESO, which matters so as well. Um so I just, we're highlighting this area tonight.
Okay. Um I'll speak to ELOs in general and then then hand it off to Matt and he'll talk about a subset of ELOs. Have you heard of ELOs?
Yeah.
Yes, no, yes. Um it stands for extended, not, not electric light orchestra, but extended, extended learning opportunities. Um it's a thing throughout the whole state of New Hampshire. And uh what it really is, is um working with students in their personal interests, personalize their learning to kind of honor what their interests are and to bring that and build a, a learning plan around many of the things that they're active in um outside of school. So it can take place beyond the classroom, but we have a lot of kids working on campus with, with teachers here in with uh ELOs. I think maybe in the past, we just called them independent studies, but independent studies are really just like a small part of what an ELO can be. Um it's credit bearing. Typically here, we treat it as elective credit. And I asked our, our, our director of counseling recently, how many credits do, does a Hannover High School student usually graduate with? And I'm hearing around twenty four credits, twenty five credits over the span of four years. And ELO is typically a half a credit or one credit, and maybe as many as two credits, so it's a real small fraction of their whole Hannover experience. Um. And we have a lot of kids, like I said, uh leaving the campus and maybe walking across the street or down the road and, and really networking with with uh community partners, could be a small business or an NGO or the, the college. So. We asked all our ELO students to create this one sheet, just to start off, but it's, uh we call it a project bio. So here are some examples of these, of just a few of the project bios. When you leave tonight and we go right outside these doors, we have a lot of project files up on the wall and you can stop and take a look at those. But um uh these are just some examples of what ELOs could be, so internships or externships, which is a little lighter than uh an internship and more of a, a job or career exploration, community service. Independent study projects that take place here or off campus. Um we have plenty of students participating in that program with uh of learning assistance that he'll talk about in just a second. And people working with our science department is lab techs. And um also work based learning. And then um typically it's fluid, but we kind of continue it within the semester and sometimes within the academic year. And I, I think of our yellows as having kind of three seasons and um so getting started up and then up and running and then wrapping it up at the end of the semester or the end of the year. So we build a learning plan, we co-design a learning plan with students. Uh they establish learning goals. Kind of big, big ideas, what's the enduring um understandings and the essential questions. And uh they create the project bio, which you saw. And uh we're working on creating a project rubric that's using our portrait of a learner as kind of the the skills that they're, they're striving for in addition to other specific things. And then during up and running, I check in with them on a regular basis, sometimes once a week, sometimes once every two weeks. And they're also completing um kind of a weekly reflection that they churn in through school log to us. Towards the end, uh when we wrap up the, the whole experience, we, we end it with a presentation of learning. So we'll have, we, we have something scheduled for the first week in January before the midterm week. And trying, trying to get kids excited about coming in and demonstrating what the experience has been like and, and what they've learned. And with that, I'll hand off to, to Matt.
Um, yeah, I, the yellows, I feel like I get the opportunity to kind of craft one piece of this pie. And those are learning assistants. So a, a learning assistant, I think is what you would traditionally think of as a teaching assistant. But the, the way that we've kind of crafted the idea of being a learning assistant is that um ninety percent of what they do is going to be in the classroom, working with uh maybe Miss Custer. And they're going to be in the classroom with, working with students throughout the entire semester. Um and so that's where the practice comes in and they're working with students in the LA's really has to do with being an active learning environment. They're not going to be in there reading, uh sitting back, but the idea is that they are engaged and learning, so. If you're, say, anywhere from a fifteen to eighteen year old, understanding how to be engaged and lead learning is kind of a difficult thing, so one of the aspects that I get to kind of come in is through the LA here in the middle is that I, I get to work with them and so we go over like what is pedagogy? And um we had, last week we had, the way we're kind of working, designing this is we're, it's called pizza and pedagogy. So uh we have four luncheons within a quarter. And we ask them, they can choose to attend the three of them. And that's kind of how we have it set up right now, but last time we, what we have for these, we have guest teachers that come in and I'll show you the next slide. What we talk about, like, how do you ask, uh, how do you ask questions to lead a discussion, so you're not answering the question for them, but you're you're kind of relating and getting them to think and create thought, and we have somebody coming in to talk about like the, the science of learning, so they're going over brain biology, it's uh Megan Sasser, school psychologist, is going to join me and talk about, here's how it thought is created, and here's where it goes in the synapse and into the prefrontal cortex, and so I get to kind of dabble in that, but that's like a very small other bit of their experience, because we want to kind of plant seeds here for these students. And we want them to take it back and work on it in the classroom, and the preparation comes with their participating teacher that they might find some time outside of class, so leave it up to them when they can kind of schedule this, because everybody's, we schedule the time is of the essence, right? Um so they kind of craft that, and I give them some ways of doing some goal setting, like they talked about the project bios that they worked at the beginning of the year. And kind of uh setting us some objectives, so if they want to be in charge of creating introductory lessons in Spanish class or like warm up activities or and uh there's a student in comp one, I think they're going to be uh teaching for like two days straight, like that's what their end goal is before the semester is over, so. That's kind of what an LA is within this, and this is just our pizza and pedagogy. These are the first four that we kind of have set up. And who's coming, so we talk about um teaching with purpose, brain bio is our next one. It's effective communication. When you're working with a student in, in, in aspects like this, especially when it's peer to peer, also, I think that's a, that's, I don't experience that in all my life. In, in, in my teaching, I'm working with them, and then the last one, which we're still, I wasn't going to put someone's name up here, but talking to a person, uh using classroom discussion in, in active learning environments, you know, how it can really be turned back in the learners, in learners' seat, so. Um and please feel free to ask questions whenever you have it. And um oh, that was our first discussion there, that's Miss Seaver, she was up front. And uh that, those were all the students that attended that, those are LA's. And uh it was also some of our help of tutors, because they're very much kind of in that same realm of actively working with kids on a day to day basis, so. Thank you. And so, and so. Other questions, you guys?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Gina.
This is so cool. It reminds me of Co-op a little bit, uh Northeastern, I'm just curious. Are the kids doing the, their experiential piece during school hours, or could they do it after school?
Some of them are, are doing it during school hours and some of them, it's, it's after school. We have a student, for example. Let's see, probably spends more time in the dance studio than they do here on campus with us and, and is a senior. And so um seniors have that flexibility that kind of, once they're done, they can go, and he he's learning, he's continuing his study of dance, but he's also teaching young students as well, so um we have a student at Northern Stage currently involved with the, the Peter Pan production that they're, they're preparing for in, in late December. Um so, yeah, it's happening throughout the day.
It just seems like a really cool potential partnership for the school within the community and like I can imagine small businesses seeing this as a neat opportunity also to tap into talent and to build, you know, like, not internships necessarily, but I'm, I run my own business. I would love to have a high school person that's for me, I mean, I, I don't know, so like, how do we um, how can we support you in getting the word out about this very innovative program?
Yeah, just let's, let's
Talk more.
Talk more and, and we want to grow this and scale it, you know, currently there's about almost forty students involved in, in one flavor of yellow, and I think that, like Julie's vision is to scale this up and and uh so. Like, yeah, I really want to make sure that these walls feel like permeable to the students and they feel like the community is a place where they can learn as well and that we acknowledge that learning through through this program.
That's great. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
Just curious about the process of designing an ELO, like in terms of what makes it and, you know, or Brooke, the can ask, you know, students up with in terms of what is an acceptable ELO, you know, like the components that are needed to.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm coming here after twenty one years in Vermont and I, I had a, I was doing similar work in Vermont, and so I had some, some templates that I brought, but to be honest, I think New Hampshire has a lot of great resources. Julie, on this first week of school, she gave me this big binder from twenty sixteen, and she goes, here's the handbook, and I was like, wow, there's like a handbook in New Hampshire for yellows, and it's, it's really well designed. And so um there was a template that the school was already using in the spring. And I've continued to use a lot of the documents that were already here in Hannover, and so there's a planning document to answer your question. And we sit down with the students and we have a conversation, we say, what do you want to learn, what is, what is your interest, and now let's put it and kind of design it within this framework. Yeah.
You have questions?
Yeah. Are you able to accommodate all the kids that want to do this? I think so, so far, yeah, I try to, um we've had a couple ninth graders um and not, and, and I'm like, you know, why do a ninth grader, you're transitioning from Lyme or RMS. And you should like explore all the clubs that are offered here. And you should like get to know this new community that you've just stepped into, so even though I think our handbook says it's okay for ninth grade. Um I try to honestly, I try to discourage it, at least until second semester. And so um I think they'll have plenty of time. Ideally, um in Vermont, transportation was a big issue. And this is like the perfect place where that, that's not as big an obstacle. But I'm, I'm thinking about bolder students that have more flexibility in their schedule. Um soft ninth and tenth graders tend to have more prescribed. Um, soft ninth and tenth graders tend to have more prescribed classes. Uh, but then they start to open up in eleventh and and twelfth grade. And that's really where we want them to start thinking about career exploration, life after Hanover. You know, if you're interested in engineering, maybe you should see what it's like to be an engineer first. You know, um my, my son is a junior engineer student in Boston and I wish he had the chance of you know, to spend some time with a firm or, you know, doing something like this before, before you might. It's tough.
Can students, you may have already asked this, but can students be paid again, get credit through this program?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's work-based learning, but sometimes it, and sometimes I categorize it as work-based learning. Um, and they still build a learning plan around there. And um we still talk about like all the transferable skills that they're learning and um, but uh, you know, we have a student that had a summer job in one of the labs at the college. And they wanted to hold on to him. So he still goes and spends a considerable amount of time. And for that one, I don't call it work-based learning because it's, it's like very chemistry specific, you know, so it's, he's in the chem lab and he's doing like complicated chemistry, you know, so.
Great.
And I'm assuming there's well-established safety protocols for protecting them from physical labor or things that are, if they're underage for, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, we have, we follow everything that New Hampshire dictates and and it's um so especially for things that aren't um employment. So it's a, it's a greater area for us when the student isn't getting paid and isn't an employee, right? And they're they want to do an internship, but it's unpaid. And uh we have to be very careful about, you know, where they are, who they're with, things like that.
So that's not, there's, seems like such a good opportunity for kids around five oh four plans who might thrive in different types of learning environments, particularly like more experiential or hands-on versus classroom. Is there is there any um, do you know, like, I'm thinking of like, sometimes people with ADHD or dyslexia might thrive in a different
Yeah.
environment than a straight classroom. So I'm curious, is there um cross-fertilization between the five oh four team and your team to identify ways to give those kids different ways to learn?
No.
So yeah, so this program is accessible to all students and um I know Luis works with some case managers when they have specific students that they want to connect here with for projects. However, um, I think the idea in this, you know, they need good work really hard last year um with Matt Prince and and others to kind of move this program so that we have a full-time yellow, yellow person. So we can start to really think about learning. And that's really what New Hampshire was all the three oh six and but that really is like the competency that looking for skills and that's, that's part of the flavor. And so so we're reading this open for everybody and really want to encourage uh maybe kind of a shift a little bit in um, you know, what is your passion, right? And talking about that, these bios on the hall really highlights a whole breadth of students, right? Many on plans, many are, you know, headed off to the I D's, right? And so um, I think that as this program grows, we're going to see that all students are interested and that they're talking about the cool things that that everybody's good. Maybe sort of classically, so I, I'm hoping that we become a school with a lot of culture where people are talking a lot about different emphasis to bring in passion projects.
Kelly, one more. Bring us home.
Yes, so hopefully it will kind of. I'm curious if any of these have come out of March intensive experiences.
I'm the question.
I don't know. I'm going on my first March intensive session this year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to think. I think that um what actually probably I would, I would make a wager that some of these students will design a March intensive based on their field of awareness and um so.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Julie, did you have anything else or you all been?
No, we would love it if um you take that to the passive. I do want to grow it.
Okay.
Um, you know, we, uh, Pam was mentioning to me, like, we're doing a little bit of diploma pathway work. You know, wherever that goes with the staff, we'll find out, but we're hoping that those, you know, the yellows will be part of that pathway and therefore kids will be forced to do them. Right? If they choose to do a pathway, so I think we're, we're hoping to make it so. Luis is pulling his hair out.
Julie, do you have any numbers concerns that that are too low or no?
No, 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 because um right now it's actually eighty percent.
Right.
Right, Louis is doing um some study strategies. Um, so he's actually sixty percent yellow in the fall and one hundred percent in the spring and and doing other work to keep him full-time. Um, but we would you know, what I think the part of that was wanting to grow it. And I think even just the boards out here, there's stuff that's going to go in a program of studies. Um, it's more, it's becoming more visible. Um, it's like I personally have two children who each did their own yellow, but it was really quiet. Like people would say, I didn't know that you could do that. And I feel like Luis is really sort of making it um much more public. And so as the, as students walk by the boards, see what other students are doing, they'll come up with ideas and I think they'll be over busy. I think right now they're right busy, but it, you know, we like to be busy here.
We're designing an advisory lesson to tackle the yellows for the spring. That'll be the um tenth and eleventh graders will have that as part of their advisory. Um, I know I was talking to my advisor, they're like, wait a minute, what? We can do what? You know, that's an idea, but I don't know. This has already talked to students, they're sitting next semester. Um, the project ideas, so.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. We're going to shift to business-acquired discussion and it sounds like there might be a familiar face coming on the hotline as a deputy treasurer. Anyone, want to walk us through that, Cheryl?
I want to see what resonates.
Challenging bullet questions.
Good evening. I'd like to see how you. Gerald Lindberg, and I've been dressed in treasure, I think, since twenty-ten. So that question about the treasure, very fortunate.
Someone asked, who are all these people on these emails that they don't know?
Yes. So anyway, I thought I would come tonight in person so I could say hi and that you see me and uh discuss a transition that has occurred. Um, Elaine Morgan, as I mentioned, is been a long time. Uh, she was a teacher for forty-some odd years, first of all, and she was a great Norwich uh resident and community service type person. And she's assisted me for many years. Um, she's at a point where she turned eighty and said, I probably should step down and let somebody younger do this. So we talked about it and uh of course, I talked to Lily and now you know that she's accepted uh coming on board. So um happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Lily is a familiar face to most of us. Any questions for Cheryl? So. So you know, right? We're going to shift now to the funness and nice move over to the fund of policy. We have second readings for seven different policies. We've talked about them all before. Uh, this includes both March intensive and the so-called cell phone communication device policy. I'll highlight those in terms of the second readings. For the unauthorized use of communication devices or J I C J, there, there's some green text where we did some wordsmithing. We also clarified the literal bell to bell was not a thing at the high schools. We made it that meant. And I think that was probably the only one that really jumped out in these changes from the first reading. And everything else, I think we've talked about already, specific to that policy, we're happy to have more discussion. For the March intensive stuff, we had um some nice specific comments from a board member that gave us more ammunition, but more things to describe in terms of accountability and post-March, sort of how things went, things we can improve upon. So we added a lot of that language or thinking to that board member. And I think that's most of the additions to those things. I remember we had a comment from the public who had a question about phones. Any other questions for comments from board members before we get to public comments? Tara?
I think, um, we had just suggested in the previous meeting that the printed name line be added for the base scholarship application. And I don't see that.
So you're referring to I M I P S A?
Can you repeat that? I couldn't hear. People couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, we had just uh talked about adding a printed name line under the signature line for the scholarship application for clarity. Um, um, and I just didn't see that habit weight.
Okay, right, we can make that. And that's
Yeah.
minor enough, I think that we can still squeeze that through those or sense to that's a word. I think for that too. Gina?
Um, really nitpicky thing.
I can't even click right which policy you're talking about.
Uh, I, it's one of the one that has the word chaperone in it. It's still, I think the spell check must
Okay.
thinks chaperone is spelled chaperon.
Yeah, I saw that. I don't know on top. If you look at the name of the doctor, maybe it's. We talked about that this morning.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, we will. Again, line by line, correct spelling workshop.
Yeah, in the staff. Maybe it's in the staff market intended. It was maybe that one. I just noticed it.
The agreement form is something.
Yeah, it's the, it's, it's one of the wordier ones.
Uh, Neil and then Garrett.
Hmm, I want to thank the Posco me. I was the one that made recommendations for changing the March intensive policy, which they entertained today. And I do notice that um a lot of that stuff is over there, but I am curious um, the policy committee's discussion over the evaluation of accountability. Um, I think I had one bullet item in there that specifically referenced um doing a trend analysis of course participation based on socioeconomic um details and also I mean key status. And I'm curious why the policy committee decided to.
More, actually, that's a great question. There's more that we actually expanded it. Wanted to come up with things like grades, gender, religion, students participating in sports. And so not restricting it to just socioeconomic or I am or I to I E Ps. And several different groups that might be of interest for future planning. Especially in participation rates such as athletes who may not be able to participate as much.
Um, I appreciate the explanation. I think though, without um providing some clarity around what those things are, by making that bullet item broader, it's removed some of the specificity of the request.
Then, so you were asking to put in a more direct thing to a socioeconomic variation among students participating?
I mean, I would recommend all the things that you just um uh said, the committee um thought ought to be expanded or added to that, I think would be appropriate to include.
And just to make clear, I'm on the board. If you look at the very bottom of this, it's the bullet point that is third from the bottom. So maybe more direct context of why we're referring to participation among students.
Sorry, I'm trying to analysis that one?
Yeah.
Okay, it's the, yeah. One thing we'll have to be careful about is the number of students in specific groups because if we don't have a big enough cohort, we will not be able to delineate that information.
And many of these March intensive courses are single digits, so it'd be
We'll have to be.
Identifying a certain number of specific students.
Just so you're aware of that.
Um, Garrett, I thought you had a moment.
Yeah, so it's just a question. I apologize, Mr. Me this morning, but um with regards to the March intensive program. I guess it comes back to the original question when we put this whole policy in place because no one really knew exactly what the rules were behind the situation, but I guess I'm kind of wondering, so it says all students are required to participate. And then we deleted the attendance policy that says participation is mandatory unless otherwise excused by the principal. And then we said that March intensive elisted either successful participation or not non-participation, which I know we had a lot of discussion around not wanting to make March intensive punitive and not wanting to you know, basically hurt kids if they don't participate with grades and making it in some stressful situation. But I guess what I'm reading here is, is is it basically the policy that if the child doesn't want to participate in March intensive, that they just I guess approach the I M director and say, I don't want to participate. And then they just don't, then they just get a non-participation. They don't care about participating and they don't care about, I mean, I guess for an underclass minutes, they basically lose their wa- their line, right? Their position in line for getting some of the higher ones. But if you're a senior, you'd be really fair. Knowing that this is like part of our school and they're like, I guess, but otherwise do they just have five days off or they go somewhere else or they go skiing or something? I mean, how's it like?
So if I'm understanding your question correctly, it would be that if the student is not able or not willing to attend for whatever reason, that it would fall into the regular attendance policies of what governs successful attendance or not, or successful participation or not, this program or any other program at the high school.
So they just miss like five days.
So if a student pulls out for five days, for whatever reason, March intensive or sick or family vacation or what have you,
Right.
there would be the typical protocols of possible repercussions and those would fall into separate policies based on attendance. Uh, Kelly?
Um, it's a minor detail, but maybe worth putting in there.
Um, where, where are you?
Eligibility still March intensive.
Okay.
Um, homeschool students, we haven't specified residing in the district and probably should.
I think that's her point. So homeschool students within Hanover or Norwich?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you for that. I don't, I, I think that would be a minor wordsmithing issue if that if.
The intention of it, but.
Any other comments before we get to our public comment? Pam, do you still wish to speak? We're all listening to Julie and Tim.
I, you, you want to talk about the cell phone? Yeah, 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 I wanted to. Yeah, I don't know what to say about the March intensive thing. I was trying to understand you here. Um, right, it's four and then it, and there is an N P on the transcript. Right? So there's boxes on the transcripts and so that you put in an S B U or M B.
So do we find that a lot of kids just don't participate, like particularly seniors?
I would say when we do, and this is what will, which will make what you've asked for a meal successful is we'll report to you on that. And it's usually better than a regular school day in terms of absences. Except maybe Friday.
Yeah.
Sometimes Friday is like a regular school day. So I mean, there's different regular school days, like the first day of school versus like next week on Monday and Tuesday, right? So it's definitely never as bad as that. One week for Thanksgiving, I'll keep on going on that. But, but the uh the, I would say in general is better than a regular school day.
I think last year there were, it was about twelve to thirteen per grade, but it was slightly up among seniors. It was about thirty seniors, I believe, got an N P uh last year, which was a higher percentage than the other groups. I do think that the lottery closed that fall. I also think we were in a little bit of a unique circumstance where some seniors did not get weren't there, they, or they were limited by the winter sports calendar. They necessarily would have been their first choice. Um, and so, and that, that's my explanation or understanding of it. But I think it is fair to say that slightly higher non-participation.
And we still also give non-participate to kids who get sick during March intensive. And so what was pretty painful when we were doing the placements this year was going, oh, um, that person had the flu. Right, but like
And they lost their place.
They lost a place.
But for seniors, there's an increase on their care, but I guess it's kind of like all adults in the room. At the end of the day, if they want to not participate, don't want to do it, that's their decision. And you're all adults and they can go.
Right, I think it's, it's sort of like any school day and unlike Vermont where whether your parent calls you in or not, it's an unexcused absence. There's, they, they call it as like unexcused, but we're not chasing because we know you're not going down eighty-nine type of absence. But it's still considered an absence. Right here, we're much more, if the parents say we're taking the kid out until it gets extreme. And sometimes we say we're going to choose to not count it as excused. But in general, we tend to believe parents with an excuse or kids and give that give that to the parents, right? Like to allow the parents to make that call. Um, but it does count towards there. We have a ten, fifteen, twenty rule with absences. So even if they miss four days, and then that adds to their ten, they'll get a letter saying you've missed ten days of school. They'll have a meeting when they miss fifteen.
Right.
Right, so it counts as that.
Our standard sentence.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And then for the cell phone one, I just wanted to, you know, we had a conversation yesterday, Dev was there for, I think, Alvin, Robert. And then for the cell phone one, I just wanted to, you know, we had a conversation yesterday, Dev was there for, I think Alvin, Robert was there for it. Oh, you, oh, one piece. Um, so, but the, in it, we had, um, we had talked about. Not confiscating phones and then letting the main office know. And when we talked about it on the ground with all the humans. Um, it seems like it's not going to be a problem. So, so you know how you guys crossed off? Let the main office know, we're just going to confiscate them. Because it will be, you know, what is your name? And Deb says, I'm Julie Cook. Right, like, like it'll start to be a game and it's like, okay, I'm going to have the assistant principal go see Julie Cook and it wasn't Julie Cook's phone. And it'll just be a mess, so um, we're just gonna. Um, have them confiscate the phone, bring it to the main office. We'll decide if it's first offense, second offense, third offense. Decide whether it goes at the end of the day, we're calling the parents, putting in the warning. But we think that it doesn't seem feasible to do it the other way. So sorry, because I think that might have been. I don't know what that was. It might have been a request from us.
You're asking for a shift from the first offense, which as written is reporting to the principal for documentation. And you want to switch it to add the first offense confiscation of the device.
Faciation and the, and the principal will document. Like, we're going to do the same consequence, it's just to ask teachers to send emails or. You know, whatever, call down and say so-and-so has a phone, will you come get it? It just doesn't seem like it's going to work.
The issue they talked about is having, you know, the administrators will know if the student has been. Brought into the office before for having their phone, but teachers don't necessarily know that if they. You know, come upon a student in the hallway that has a phone out, that kind of thing, so.
And our, it's only spent like one fourth of the day with a teacher, right? Or so. It's, so it's not the same as if you're all in the same class. Like, I don't think a kindergarten is looking out of phones, but like you would be with them all day mostly and so you would know that that was the third time they did that.
And one thing I'm thinking of too, um, I suppose, is that this is not just the high school team. If the elementary schools where this can and has happened. Would this be of a couple of things, I see, and this is known as well, so.
Right, if you're okay with us doing whatever in that section as long as we're following the warning. Take a, you know, till the end of the day, parent. We might do it a little bit differently, like I, it, it, to me, it does need to be written there, but I just want to do to be aware.
Ah, as a teacher, it would make me really uncomfortable to be in a position to take. A seventeen-year-old's phone, the confrontation aspect of that, the, oh, come on, I just. I was just checking a message from my mom, I was just, I, uh, I don't know, I think that's asking a lot. And, and potentially, I, I vastly, as a teacher, I would vastly prefer a phone call to the office. I just saw so-and-so with their phone. Administrators, please deal. I, I, as an educator, my job is to educate, not enforce. Device policies. I, I don't know, but I, it makes me really uncomfortable, especially if the child I don't have a relationship with.
And with a reminder that the state themselves is grappling with this, where the detective advisor basically said, teachers are our allies, they are not the enforcers. And that said, our teachers will enforce.
And I'll, you know, I'll, I'll go further to say, like, I think most of the kids in this building are safe in that sense, like as, you know. That's certainly not true in all buildings and again, not knowing all of the kids in this building. There might be something I shouldn't actually confront and say, that's it, give me your phone, right? I don't, I don't like it.
Anyone else particularly people from other schools or other characters, Renee?
I'm just considering like, uh, what has been the discussion, I'm like, want to substitute this teaching and it's like. How do they interact with this policy?
Yeah, I mean, I was a teacher in a school when we confiscated cell phones. It was part of my job and I did it and students understood. And were there some students over the years that I taught who were scary and maybe I wouldn't have. Confronted them, but would have gone right to the office. Oh, yes, but that was before cell phones. Um. I think that the council has had conversations about cell phones. Students on council have understood. That they have a role to play, helping to model. Students have talked about pushing back and then realized, you know, that's not going to be very effective. So my hope is, I mean, one of the unfortunate elements of all of this is that we're now closing in on the end of November. It's the first quarter. And now the rule is going to change and it would have been great if it could have been, been placed at the beginning of fall. I think there's going to be some stumbling, but I, I'm going to hope that for the most part, people. Understand that nobody really. Created this situation and we're working with it and we're doing the best we can. And so I. You know, I hope that that's what faculty and. Students do.
Yeah, I mean, I think the language here doesn't say who confiscates it. You know, I guess my piece is like, the phone needs to be compensated at the first defense and to me, that's can be determined at school level in terms of how that happens. I don't know that that's us, like just that that first is. There's a warning that, like, because it doesn't say who.
She's proposing.
It, it, I mean, it doesn't say teacher will confiscate or principal will confiscate. It just says confiscation of the device. I mean, and I realize that's crossed out, so, but I think it doesn't, for me, specifying a role is also problematic because like. What if it's not a teacher who sees it? Do we not want paraeducator, you know, like, I don't know, like, whose role is it in the building? Is it whatever the adult is? Is it, that's the entire staff. I, I just think, to me, there's a little bit of like how granular we need to be. Other than like, the step is a confiscation of the phone. If a student challenges a certain adult, perhaps then like, yeah, go to the office and have a conversation with. The next. Yeah, there's a piece for me that's, that feels like perhaps not the most important thing for us to get stuck on and not.
I'm sorry, so as a member of the past, Julia told us what she wanted, so why aren't we just writing what she wants? Because they're the ones that are in charge of reinforcing, why, why are we discussing this?
Well, because it's our job to create the policy and see.
We're all arguing over the consequences and how it's going to be enforced from the school and Julie had told us how they want to force it, so why don't we just leave it? Right, I, I think maybe this is, I'm not trying to intimidate anybody, but. If that's how they want to enforce it, then I'm assuming they know how, the best way to enforce it in their building versus all of us trying to think about. Are they going to confiscate? I don't even know what, I'm a little bit confused, maybe you want to write it or something for us about the policy, but I'm still, I'm actually confused now. Are we actually confiscating the phone or are we sending the kids to the office?
Well, I think partially the confusion is that this was being discussed, that policy for several months, put up by teachers and.
Because none of us see how to make the consequence.
Well, and also that's, this is one school among two for this district, but among four for the policy itself, also the assistance across the schools. This is why we're talking about it and maybe we'll have the public chime in as well. Thanks for here. Amy, you want to go first?
I was just going to say, what we were talking about is this school, we were, we did it with the last policy rendition and then confiscation got. Taken off, right? So that, that's the, but when we were talking about it, we were trying to go with, hey, maybe confiscating isn't. The thing for the teachers to do because the policy said teach it, but we just then realized in this group of people that. You can't have seven hundred and fifty or seven hundred students and two people. Running around to confiscate all the phones, like it's just, the policy will fall down. And so that was the, you know. That was the issue in terms of that. But, but even if it's just like it remains in the office and a warning. And then we could figure out who confiscates it, because you need it for the other schools too, so I don't want to be the one that.
And I agree, the implementation, like the who and the how they do it, this, this, that does not need to be here. And then see a second member of the public.
So when I read, when I read green. In this policy. From an RMS perspective, and we're not HSS, um, but we, it's written in green, works for us as a school community because. It is necessarily that Chelsea or I are going to go to the classroom spacing at the phone. The teacher's going to say, I need you to take that up. When, whether that's for documentation, uh, turning it for the rest of the day, or that third offense where the bigger conversations happen. Adults can say, and do that.
So just elaborating on, because I, you know, this, this comes up in, in my world during like final exams, I have colleagues who take the phones and put them all by the front. They got them fall behind the thing and then the person's phone is scrunched in the blackboard going up a depth, like. These are expensive devices and that's, you know, and I'd like to think a lot of the things we talk about around here is like, well, yeah, that one student, that one time. This policy unfortunately is not that, right? Like this is going to be a hard habit to break, I think, for some students in our buildings, right? And so I can see this coming up more than the average policy that we're discussing. Um, and I, I don't know, again, like that twelve hundred dollar phone. I want to be responsible for taking that away, making sure it gets safely to the office, like. I don't know, I, it, it, again, as a teacher, it would concern me to be, have that responsibility. But I'm maybe inventing problems that don't exist.
I mean, yeah, I mean, part of the thing, at least as a policy committee member, that my big thing is, is if we don't have the students have their own agency and controlling their phone use. This policy is not going to work, because we're not going to be able to sit here. I'm all about not having phones, but if the kids don't have their, aren't able to put their phones in their bags and not do that on their own, then it's just going to be. Utter hell for teachers and principals and stuff. And I know you're saying, well, of course, we never used to have phones, but at the end of the day. This has to come back to the kids to basically want to also. Be responsible, right? So anyway, this is really going to work.
And we also, uh, the buy-in is from parents is to enforce, enforce, enforce. And then writer of the numbers at Hanover High School, we're at hundred percent for having some sort of phone in some sort of way and at the middle school, we're at fifty-nine percent having phone.
I just have to, I mean, I, I think it's good to think about the exceptions. It is working, like a three mile zone. Hartford High, there are not phones, there are incidents, but it is just not a big deal. It is the rule, it is the law, it is happened, like. I think, yeah, I just. Yeah, if it's the rule and everybody knows it's the rule and this is what's happening, it's amazing how non-complicated it has been. Amazing, like, just.
And what's the consequence with?
I mean, it's the same sort of thing, um, and I couldn't speak exactly to it because I don't remember all the details and I'm district wide, but um. Um, and my office is no longer right there, but it's very simple, like. It gets confiscated, you don't have to turn it in, you can have it on you as long as people don't see it, you know, like you can have it with you all day. But yeah, if it were to get scratched in the office because it got confiscated, that's a choice. You made a choice to have it out. At a time when you didn't know, like. You're a high school student, like, yeah, it sucks, it's expensive, but you know the rules. And if you chose not to follow them, there's consequences, um. I, you know, uh, it's just, it's not been a big deal, I guess, would be my. Summary, it just. I mean, there are of course incidents, but it just is not a. It hasn't been this crazy. Thing, it just is a change everybody knows is coming and it's.
Yeah, yeah, Julie and I had a long conversation today anyway, so about this, so, um. The adolescent brain, I don't want to lose sight of that and the why behind this. When students ask me, why are we doing this? I think that's one of the best questions students can ask and we ought to be able to give them an answer. Why are you doing this? Let me tell you why. What's missing in so much of the discussion from reading the minutes, I think is the why behind this. There were legislators who read the anxious generation, who read the coddling of the American mind, that informed this. We are not here as teachers to try to punish students by taking their phones away. They should be con- confiscated. I think that's a natural consequence. And it's also so clear, so direct. The visual of the phone, confiscate, go away. That's a direct correlation to the action of taking the phone out. What I would prefer, what makes us different is our off-campus. And I'm not, and I want to be clear, um, that I am not suggesting for a moment that we should be policing the off-campus. It's hard enough to police this already in the building. The number of students, smartwatches, they increase in the number of students with smartwatches. Like, you know, I put my phone in the bin, but I'm seeing this activity in class and it's the tugging of the phone, the beeping of the phone and they're doing this, but you know. And they're reading their phone, trying to hide it under the sleeve. The phones that are on their wrists also have to be. Considered in this policy as part of that.
But they are, so they'd be part of this confiscation.
They absolutely have to be part of that. Um, but for me, I, instead of saying we can't police this off-campus, I think we should be asking, how can we do this? What are the possibilities for changing this culture, especially given the adolescent brain? We have an opportunity to let students discover who they are without their phones. I want to see them have that opportunity. If we can't find a way to fully disconnect them from their phones, I think we're depriving them of that. What a joyous school that would be to be in, where students absolutely cannot access their phones. Right? And to hear the noise that we would hear, I think, from student conversations all over the building. By not having those phones be the center of their identity, the center of who they are. Yes, we're saying you're going to put it away. I don't think that's enough. I came to the policy committee and you kindly put up with me when I came and spoke there. Um, I strongly advocate for the yonder pouches. I realize there's a cost that goes with that, but if we look at the data. I think there's value in looking at the data. When we look at the data on the yonder website, specifically the website they have just for schools. All fifty states, I think it's something like thirty-nine countries that are also using these locking pouches in schools. Given adolescent brain development, that tug, that pull, right? To be able to get the phone, the device, the connection. Being able to put it away in that locking pouch would prevent them from being able to do that and it would apply universally to all students. Yes, there will be students who, what I'm sure violate that slip a calculator in instead of the phone or something like that. But the student becomes responsible for that phone. I'm not confiscating, I'm not touching it, right? The student keeps the phone with them, but it's in that lockable sealed pouch and it only gets unlocked when they're leaving the building. Our students, I worry, are going to with this policy as written, they're going to step across that very busy driveway that we have. Just so they can get one foot onto the Quaker Meeting House lawn to be on their phones. They are going to be on the sidewalk, right? Out there, on their phones. What will be the impact on the, you know, revenue for the CAF? Especially when freshmen get off-campus privileges, second semester coming there, right? It's going to be all, everybody. Also, nine or fifteen kids, practically, are going to be headed to the co-op, right? So they can be on their phones. We have to recognize the why of this policy, which brings me back to those books that Jonathan Haidt wrote. When he spoke at Dartmouth a few weeks ago, he said, we're no longer talking about correlation, we're talking about causation. In terms of the negative impacts on adolescents. I would love to see something we did, I don't know, probably twenty years ago, maybe more than that. There was this fantastic book that came out about the disruptions coming to schools through technology. And we had a school-wide book read on that for parents, for community members, for teachers, for students, for administrator. I would love to see this body generate that for this community. Let's take the science. How far do we have to look to see how science is being completely disregarded in our society today? In terms of informing public policy. Let's use the science that Jonathan Haidt has put together since the early twenty-tens. Let's read those books, let's examine that data, let's form those book groups. Have those conversations with parents, with students and with administrators with this board. Bring this community together around this larger issue than inform this new law. I want to see students have the opportunity to see who they are without. The phone being the center of their identity and their relationships with other. So I have those concerns about off-campus, I want to say one more time, just because I want to make sure Julie hears me say this publicly, that I am not saying that we should be policing off-campus. We can't do that, but we need a policy that can fully disconnect students from their phones. And I think the yonder pouches are the way to go with that. There are plenty of other schools that have done that. Claremont did it last year. Valley News did a follow-up article in August this year saying, one year, how did it go, right? And I think they're, what they shared in that article matches what's on the yonder website. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, brief response on the yonder issue for those, we, we talked about it briefly at one meeting about this last time, we talked about it more in depth, that policy. I realize I'm going to fall asleep, we didn't matter with standing, right? Happy coincidence, thank you, Eric. But that, the decision that we made was the implementation of how to do that sort of thing. Which is obviously going to vary by school in terms of percentage of students with the phone and all those other things. It's certainly within this individual school's prerogative to do so. And I don't think there's anything in the policy that would limit or prevent them from doing so, so it would not surprise me. If one or two of our schools go down that, actually, but we do not explicitly want to label a specific company, a specific brand, a specific style of. Enforcement within this policy that applies. Of enforcement within this policy that applies across the whole district. Any further discussion from board members on any of the above issues or policies?
I just wanna kind of pick up on that thread of, I don't know if it's book group or conversation, but the, I think one of the big things about. The intentionality behind this policy is cell phones, sorry, yes, the, I don't think it fits in this language, but. The idea is that it, we're, we're trying to do something in the schools, because that's what we need to do. Well, we know that this spans all aspects of our lives, adults too, and, you know, I. Love my in-laws, but they're as attached to their phones as I think probably. Um, but I, I do wonder if there's a world for broader discussion. And I, I don't know if that's in the realm of the board to initiate, but that is, I, I like that idea. Because I think if, if it becomes pervasive in the community, that this is just the common language that we know, we understand the kind of connection of. Social media, cell phones, everything, unimpeded health of our youth, then it, it is a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer in and out, and we get to actually have more nuanced discussions about, yeah, Apple Pay at the co-op is totally cool. And I, I can responsibly use that as opposed to I'm taking it out at the co-op to do Apple Pay and also like sneaking on my Instagram. You know, it's like, it's a, it's the ability to have that conversation continue at home, I think, in the same way that it's happening at school. So I don't know what the board's role is in initiating this sort of discussion.
I've got their prompts of discussion, which is one of the things we'd hope to do, a sort of a society conversation starter, what to do there. I will remind this board that some of the students who came to policy had the idea of enforcing this on the staff as well. Which would probably become a negotiations issue that we decided not to broach at this time, so. But, um, some of the students were thinking some of the, Neil.
Um, procedurally, what, uh, are we voting on these policies tonight?
That is the open expectation, yeah.
And so when we do that, there's been recommended changes in language for both the cellphone one and the March of the Tensive one.
Yeah, so that would be something that I think we do need to figure that out now, especially the form one that comes to the suggestion by the high school. And I haven't seen an obvious overarching consensus on that, particularly for the issue of enforcement and confiscation. So if the conversation ends naturally, I think we stick with the current language unless there's an as amended or we'd have an overwhelming. Or urging of it, bring it back to policy committee. Go for it again.
So I don't have an urge to bring it back to policy committee. I do have an urge to make sure that whatever we pass tonight is as close as possible to the actual enforcement procedures. That we can get. I don't wanna get into a scenario where policy says one thing, enforcement does another, and then we got a whole bunch of students or people here grieving. That, uh, we're violating our own policy. I'm right there with you. To that end, do we know what the recommended language for that first defense should be?
Julie, do you have anything specific in wording?
I'm looking it up, we wrote it the other day, I'm just gonna get.
And I would just remind that this is fairly unorthodox, during this process, and we didn't discuss this in September. Then Neil again.
But, Mr. Chair, I will argue, right? I mean, this is the board's job, right? It's a craft policy. And while it may be unusual, given past experiences as to how these policies have gone, it is certainly not extraordinary. Um, and this type of work happens at board meetings across the country every single day.
Right, true. Yeah, Terron.
So, this recap, for this, uh, device policy. We're looking at changing the number, the one.
Yes.
First offense to the effect of students' phone will be confiscated for the remainder of the school day.
Confiscate, they have their original language in pink, the confiscation of the device for the remainder of the school, since it's not just phones.
Students' device will be confiscated, so that's the, the, basically, the content.
We're waiting on Julie, I believe that's in essence where you're going with that.
Read this out loud, or do you want to send it to?
I think it'd be helpful to read out loud, given the chime awareness of it, yeah, if you don't mind.
All right, but keep in mind, this is just the face ball, right? Like, I don't wanna mess up, they're making policy fair.
Okay, all right, I, I just don't wanna mess you guys up if, so what we had was, um. Okay, we just said anytime a phone is taken by an adult, it must be brought to the main office as soon as possible. If the adult is unable to bring the phone. Main office then should send out another adult to go pick it up, but that's like, but then this is first offense. The adult will confiscate the phone or will ask the assistant principals to get the phone. The student will need to report to the main office and speak with the AP before they can get their phone. This will be reported in incident reports. So it's kind of like what you have there minus the confiscation, right? And then the second one is the adult will confiscate the phone and will ask the AP or ask them to get the, and the phone. And the student will need to report to the main office and will not be able to get their phone until the end of the day. It will be reported in incident reports. And the third one is the same thing, confiscate or ask someone to come get it. And then they'll, um, their parents will be asked to come get it. Call the parent to pick it up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll try and.
Can we solve the problem by saying, first offense, the student may be asked. To report to the principal or associate principal's office, and the phone may be confiscated? Like, will that solve?
I think that will, and I see some head shaking, that there will, one of the arguments that we heard a lot from teachers and staff, there'd be the perception of favoritism. In terms of what the student was doing or how often the student was a troublemaker, and if there's that, this may happen.
Right, but.
That will raise its own problem.
I understand that, I'm just trying to create space in our policy, our blanket policy for the whole district. For Anissa to say, in my school, if for our handbook, this is the policy. And for Julie to say, in our school, for our handbook, this is the policy, and then the overarching. Board policy allows for both of those. That's what I'm wondering, because I, we don't police this policy, no matter what we put on this paper here, we don't police that. They have to police it. So as long as our policy creates space for that person to come for agreements and us to say, look. They're following the policy as written, per their handbook. You have no grievance here, you have no standing, because this is, it is, it, it corresponds to the state requirements, our policy. And the handbook policy for your school building.
I was, my, my, I was gonna be that, the description as, as Julie stated, that I thought was very granular. And it puts the onus to pull the associate principal or whatever it is they're doing, and they obviously have a very busy full day. To go get it from the student, pretty much close to immediately from my interpretation of what you were saying. And further documentation and an incident reporting, kind of a general escalation for the first offense. And that seems concerning to me.
Can that be their business, though? That's what I, it's a genuine question.
Yeah, I'm just curious, if more from a policy perspective as opposed to a procedure role, which is what they're working in. We just outlined that this handbook needs to clearly articulate the expectations, the handbook has clearly articulated a three-tiered approach. Three-level approach to, as opposed to saying what, tier one, tier two, or like, offense one, offense two, offense three is like. Just really not get specific in terms of our policy, just that our policy states that each school needs to have a clear, a clearly detailed. Process, procedure for their school, um. I don't, I don't know if we can do that, I don't, I could, I haven't seen. See, I mean, I, I'm not on the pulse, dug into this the way you have, but, um. Because I think it's possible, like what I heard from Julie, which I hadn't heard the first time, is that they're gonna do. The first warning is documented and there's a conversation, and then you can get your device back, as long as you've had a conversation with some administrator. And then the second time it gets confiscated for the day, so there's a clear escalation. Um, but that's not necessarily what Anissa's gonna be able or choose to do at the middle school level. Um, and maybe at the middle school, it's confiscated the first day, it's very younger, and they're just like, let's, I don't know, um.
You want to turn it again?
I, I think that that is, you're right, warning, end of the day. Here at pickup, but just we, how we decide to do that is up to each school. I mean, it's not an escalation to do logging it. Because we log all conversations when a kid comes to the office, because there's so many of us that we don't ever wanna be like, oh. Nothing ever has happened with you, because we have no clue, right? Like, we, we like to look it up, and so even put warnings in. To our documentation system, just so we know that that kid's been warned before, so it's not really an escalation, because it's what we do for things that aren't phones. Right?
Which, and what you're saying right now doesn't sound off from what is as written here.
Right, so I don't think the confiscating versus kid walking down the offices, that's like, that's sort of seems like you're saying granular. For policy, policy can just say the three tier, like, I could see if you didn't write down third, parents come to pick it up. There will be a number of parents who are really irritated that they had to like leave their job to come and get it. And why is the middle school doing that? And the high school is just like, do whatever you want, right? So, because our three tiers are different, like I could, I, I mean, I think you really do have to say somewhere. That one of the tiers is the parents coming, because that's gonna be your main complaint when people are like, the wise ones, we're having the parents come and not the other.
As, as written, the policy does not have, I mean, sort of the parents are required to physically come to pick up the phone, we don't have that anywhere in here.
Okay.
This is that, yeah, that they're notified.
Okay, yeah, we have to pick it up.
I think we, we need to somehow move the conversation forward, and I, I, I do think that, well, we need to create a policy that gives the schools. The ability to manage this differently for different age children. I mean, if you do that with every single aspect of our education, right? But I mean, whatever we put policy.
So am I hearing a request to bring this back to policy for school by school variation?
No, I, I just think it needs to be broad enough.
Yeah.
To do here, I think that was the intent.
I think if we just add something about, see the handbook, and each school, that's another major approach.
One, which makes me wonder if we go back to the, the second mini paragraph under D, where it tells us consequences for violations, is. Which mentioned there, the student code of conduct, which could help us get at this, got to undo that language as well. This is a possibility. Terron.
I would also support being, you know, referring to the handbook and the three-tiered approach. And if you have concerns about parents being put on notice, saying escalation may include involvement of, of parent. I mean, just so for full and fair notice, and no one's gonna be like, no one ever told me, you know, so parents can object. I would, I would say, do something like that.
And that's why we're having any sort of subsequent incidents where we didn't have a member on.
Technically, because it, it's going to look different at every school, and that's good, yeah. So I would get rid of one through three and just say three-tiered approach. As documented in each school handbook, may involve parental, you know. Parental notification and or pickup for the handbook, I, whatever. And if we can't do that on the fly, then I would suggest let's go back, because just for the sake of time.
And what's thoughts on that, a suggestion made to bring us back to policy, get more granular, perhaps some school by school variation.
I would not recommend the granularity. I don't think anyone here with all that shaking recommends further granularity we recommend on the office. Is it, I would say, generally?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just be clear, make sure I'm, I'm on the right page here, is not granularity, but still three tiers with school by school variation per separate code of conduct.
Yes.
Just, just to me, that, that sounds like it's making it more complicated, not more granular. All right, Neil.
I would, um, I, I carry your gun down, but I think our, our, the recommendation is that you make the policy language. Um, broad enough not to reference individual schools, but merely reference, you know, a, a. A, a set of steps or processes that are available at schools for, for enforcing this.
Which pulls back to the other thing of, if we hear in this conversation, which is going in many different directions, all which I very much appreciate. Is the language as written in green enough to hold us to those thoughts? I see some thumbs up actually from both schools.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, so maybe we are fine there.
As long as you don't mind to plus up, if anyone complains about us confiscating. It's the only way we could make that happen, but the green is fine, the green is broad enough.
I think, Julie, does that, the, if the green is fine, the only thing I say, that in step one, you should have reason to hold that confiscation. Kid refuses to talk to the assistant for the phone, unwilling to have a check-in, has a sporting event, and so leaves campus, like, right? I don't know, I think.
Lauren Carey, I'll stop right there. There is separate language in the code of conduct, that if a student basically says no, or I refuse, that, that changes everything. And they have the separate court of conduct policies, that get right out of that.
All I was trying to say is, in the first one, it does not mention confiscation, so if at some point a school administrator wanted to confiscate. And it was the first warning, we could, I mean, if we're on that train of getting that specific in here. Um, it doesn't mention it in tier one, and so, or in step one, so I, yeah. We're gonna leave the green, I just wanna make sure that, um, that feels comfortable, that. It doesn't mention confiscation as a piece of the first offense.
Your responsibility.
I mean, something's being confiscated, so they're in class. If the student has to leave the class to bring their phone down and talk to Pam, they're confiscating them out of class. So, okay, I almost would rather confiscate the phone so they can finish class. And then have the conversation because they're coming to get their phone, right? So, like, I, but I think that's just a way of looking at it, right? Because either way, like, that person is walking to the office. Whether their phone's in the office or something, but they're going, and it's more disruptive, I think, to send them to the office. When you really want them to finish math class, because if the phone becomes the thing here, like, we're not getting through a lesson. Right? It, it might be fine in a week or two or three, but I think you don't wanna be sending kids down in the middle of class. To the office to talk to, but we want them between them class. Uh, so I think they'll just grab the phone and say, you can get it in the office after class. Um, or whatever it might be. So if you feel like the generality puts us at risk. If we take the thing and it breaks or whatever, then I wouldn't be all tired, yeah, but I'm okay, I'm comfortable with the gray. But you might not be.
I, I will say, I'm tired of the conversation, I'm ready to be done, um, and I, like, all joking aside, I'm ready to be done with the conversation. However, I do worry to Carrie's earlier point, right? If it's in our language that that phone can be confiscated and it does get broken or something. If it's that first warning and we don't have in here that it can be confiscated, I worry about, I mean, it's my, putting my litigious hat on. That worries me, right? And I wanna protect you guys, like, I'm fine with you confiscating phones, I'm fine, like, whatever y'all wanna do. I'm okay with it, um, I wanna make sure you're protected, and I worry that this, the green language does not protect you in that instance.
Steiner wants to turn with.
I think we can solve this by doing what you said before, for the first offense, we say. Warning and the student will report to the principal or associate principal's office. Your documentation of the incident and phones may be taken.
Or, or how about just end confiscation of the device at the end?
Yeah, it's gonna be something on it.
Yes, so what is everyone's thoughts, that's looking back just at first, number one, add into the end of the sentence. And confiscation of the device. Would that settle all parties' concerns, all schools? Seeing no head shaking, no. And if we're okay with that, I would take a motion to get to it to be as amended, specific to the phone policy, right?
So let me clear, what has been the difference between the first offense and the second offense?
I think, I agree the difference, those, uh, will be confiscated, and that could be for the twenty-minute conversation you have to have. Or it could be for the remainder of the period and step one, whereas step two is clear for the rest of the day. Where it just is mentioned in the first one, but, great, that's how I.
If it is a helpful distinction.
Okay, last call, this on any other policies. All right, thank you all, we appreciate that. Now we move on to the budget update, since the night's getting started. Theresa, you wanna walk us through, uh, what's been going on here, and I see there's some discussion of the teenage as well.
Uh, it's down.
No, so click on the thing that says, I'm a human, and it'll let you right back in.
Good to establish humanity.
Yeah, oh, I'm a human, it literally says I'm a human.
Yeah, okay, it's like, it's hearing our conversations.
Um, so basically, right now, we are pretty deep in for all the meetings that we've had and everything else. We are pretty deep in for all the meetings that we've had and everything else, over the budgets. Um, wrapping up, trying to finish getting all the documentation. A lot of documentation already in the folder for Thursday's meeting and everything else. Um, so I'm wrapping up a lot of that and everything else. Um, the tax. Uh, documentation has been uploaded for tonight's meeting for the approval of the fund balance. Which, where I, twenty five was five hundred eleven thousand and. We have the extension. It is five hundred eleven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, sorry. Um, for the fund balance retention. And that is. Partly because obviously we had five hundred sixty five thousand dollar school care, um. The intent was that we would hopefully, um. Not need the retention, retain fund balance. Um, and that enough revenues from our. Um, tuition in students and everything else would help offset that cost that we have to pay. Um, recently, school care offered, I don't know, some might say this the other night, some might know it, but. School care decided that after a lot of turmoil, that as long as we paid one third of the. Assessment that's due, we pay it in December, then the other two thirds, it lets us pay over the next six months. And interest free, yeah, so we won't pay it. So we went ahead and signed that and did that right away. Um, payments were actually processed. This week. First thing is, um, so hopefully the tuition, like I said, we have an extra about fifteen students we have had. Four unenrollments, um, actually three and then one student that moved into. You know, we're so no longer tuition student. Um, so hopefully that offset revenue will. Um, offset the assessment. If it doesn't, then. By April or whatever, we'll, we'll kind of know better idea where we're at, whether or not we have to actually have a special meeting. To actually use the routine. And balance, but hopefully you will.
And I know that there were some concerns mentioned earlier that Dresden doesn't do retainage. So what are we talking about?
Retainage, but we can't do like capital reserves and things like that, but we definitely, um, they voted at some point, I forget, um. When, when the warrant, article and everything else in, and it must have been in the last several years. Because we can retain five percent, which the old rule was two and a half. So obviously it was renewed to. Put back the warrant. Do voting to five.
So much snickering, it was crying in my warrant article.
Any comments on what Teresa said regarding budgetary updates? Neil.
Um, I'll just add, so for those astute board members, which I know are all of you that are at the table, if you're still here. You'll note that the overall Dresden budget increase is currently coming in at nine point oh six percent, which is just. A tad over three percent higher than we asked. Or in the budget guidelines, driven primarily by that twenty five point eight percent increase in health insurance. Premiums. Back when we developed the quick model, we had a, uh, sort of a figure of eighteen percent was what we thought would. Uh, happen. Um, as you can see, twenty five point eight is not the eighteen percent. It is a bigger, far greater than that. And so that is what is pushing, um, the current expenditure budget well over the budget guidelines where we have. Budget committee meetings, uh, both handover and Dresden this Thursday. Uh, where we'll be going over these items in more detail. So, um, if you're interested in all of the needed details, please, um. Come on down to those meetings, we both have you.
Yeah, that is a dual meeting with at least. Five of us there, I think, acting official.
Plus the, um, plus that handover finance, I believe will be in attendance as well too, you know, an opportunity for us to share information with them. Um, and for them to ask questions as well about the, the budget building process. Um, you know, as, as Teresa noted, um, we've still got a lot of work to do on these budgets, so this is not the. The last time we'll be talking about this. This is early on in the cycle. A lot of work still left to do, um, but, uh, we'll, we'll get through this.
Thank you for that, Neil. Um, Dan, was your handle?
I just wanted to, um, maybe I'm the only person who's still figuring out how to use simply, but if you. Drag down under where it says Dresden School Board type of meeting, you'll see budget committee. And there are a whole lot of documents that are already uploaded.
Yes.
Friday, Thursday's moving aside, so. Just as a place to get up to speed.
Thank you for that.
I mean, can I ask a question then for Teresa? I'm just looking at the retainage amount.
Yes.
So the form is, uh, proposing five eleven two oh eight for the retention amount. Should, should I be seeing that appear somewhere in the MS twenty five? Is the form references?
Um, not in MS, well, yeah, it is. It's on, um. Right at the top section, like line thirty six or so, right around, um, right around line thirty two, thirty six. You'll see in that section that it should say the five eleven.
That's on line thirty one.
Reserve for encumbrances.
You know, I'm telling.
Thirty two, thirty ten. There it is.
Of there, line.
Another five eleven.
I have all the way over on the right.
Yeah, it's line thirty two. If you look at page one.
And it's rounded up to the dollar.
Oh, thank you.
Any other clarified questions or comments? Knowing that I've said we had more meetings coming. All right, then I think it's Teresa. Move on from there. We have lots most unexpected thing in the night, the survey. Timing aside, apologies for the late night on this one. So we've talked about these surveys numerous times, both in their inception as well as some initial discussion. I sent these around school by school as I finished them to all the board members, so I don't think they're new in that regard. And given that we're talking sixty nine questions per school and approximately two thousand five hundred free text comments. We're not gonna go into that in great detail tonight, although we certainly can if board members wish it. But I just wanna do sort of some key takeaways. And on what we've done with them today, what we're planning on doing, as well as things that we thought board members should know about, so post one dog me for a few minutes. And all the survey information is on, um, this document. I'm gonna be looking at. The one that is up on top called survey five ninety two, all formatted final, which is the PowerPoint presentation across. All of the schools. And we also not repeat the conversation, I guess, district. Given this. So you first wanted to highlight that. Again, this is, we're not gonna go slide by slide, question by question, sort of like the big takeaways. Is if you look from, from questions twelve to fifteen. There's a big takeaway that parents want more communication about their specific child. And more specifically about that, their academic performance. Which is something that they've complained about and we've heard them, I think, very clearly on this survey and on others. And in addition to that, they want to hear about grades and similar academic performance in emails directly. And not through things like you have an update in school ag, please go find it and things of that nature. We've heard parents loud and clear, there's something like a seventy to eighty percent approval on this, which in a survey like this is extremely high. Uh, Rob, do you wanna talk about other things that we're doing as a result of that particular aspect?
Um, one of the other things that we've talked about is just communication in general, overall for the SAU and. At the school level. And so when we started talking about survey over the summer, I tried to make some. Uncreased changes based on the feedback that we've gotten. And so now publishing the. Newsletter once a month and putting information in that about some of the issues that have come up in the survey too. So we're trying to do some direct responses to that and the schools are also working with it now, taking the information from the survey. Results and saying, okay, what can we do as a school to meet the needs of some of these work lessons and survey too? So I think it's been for me really helpful in coming into the position this year. Just in thinking about what we can do better as a district. So.
And speaking of the communication piece, we have also heard a lot of clear from parents that. They don't necessarily know a lot about what we as a school board does. If you look at the survey question that asks, what are you thinking, what are your satisfaction with these different aspects of the administration? Teachers, special teachers, principal, found office, et cetera. The biggest category for us is, I don't know what they do. So in terms of our own outreach, I think we need to work on that, both in what we do, why we do, our decisions we've made, decisions we're pondering. And so we have anything to talk about, if we're wanting to study a different context, the four chairs are taking upon themselves to actually write in Robin's. Newsletter to the community, not representing I myself, Ben Keen, even more like. Updates from the school boards that are may, that are maybe applicable to thirty thousandth level. I owe the administration a little essay about these surveys themselves, where we talked about budgets, elections, things of that nature. And then shifting topic slightly as well, the parents want to know more about legal issues relevant to the school. Very high support, eighty plus percent, that they wanna know more about actual law changes that have occurred. How they're coming down the pipeline, how we're gonna implement them. Still significant support, healthy majority about proposed law changes and what it means and don't mean, and doesn't mean. Open enrollment, district consolidation, things of that nature, as well as mixed support roughly fifty fifty for whether the schools should themselves. Be more politically involved. And Rob is gonna cut this, talking about that as well in these encounters across the schools. By the way, feel free to interrupt me at any time to recover jumper on a little quickly. In the quite, in the mid twenties of the questions. And which I, I'm a little surprised by, but across all four schools independently. There was the most dissatisfaction in terms of the amount of time spent per subject on science. All parents across all the schools want far more science for their kids. That was far more than math, ELA, languages, time outside. Science. Take that as, as you will. Wrong, um, on languages, there was some consistent support at all school levels of adding Mandarin Chinese as a language at the high school. Where it was a very strong third place after Spanish and French, and that is not currently offered at the schools. And all parents across all the schools wanted that for the high school. Among our student population, over a third of families have reported that their kids have had math tutoring. Which may or may not be surprising to us all that tutoring is high, which we knew from previous surveys, but this survey where we actually asked. For what subjects are you getting tutoring and why are you getting tutoring? And math far and above was the most popular subject. And the reasoning for the tutoring was very expansive, lots of fine and different things, but most of it was concerns about their child was struggling. Not necessarily the teacher or the methodology, but that they were struggling academically and of course. Um, we had a move around quickly. More than half of parents wanting later start time. What that means in terms of by school and how late are we talking about, there was some variation, but there was a majority of folks across all the schools. Was wanting a later start time, slightly less support at the elementary schools, but still a majority. We have made, one thing we discovered from these surveys as well as we have done, I think it's safe to say we have some very positive outcomes. Across the surveys that actually asked the same question over several years. The drop, there's been a substantial drop in the percentage of students that have a, a seeking need for mental health treatment. Three years ago, it was forty five percent of our student body was either actively seeking or already in mental health treatment. That has gone down to thirty percent or a drop of one third. Just great. And, um, that includes folks who are trying to get treatment, having trouble succeeding. If we're talking about actively in treatment, it has gone down from twenty three percent to sixteen percent. And also dropped about a third, Gina.
Oh, quick question. I was looking at the slide forty, with question forty two. And it's saying, it's the one about the time, because I was curious about that. It's the, the majority's happy with eight to three. But so are we reading it though, that because thirty four percent want eight thirty to three thirty that people want later starts?
One second. So you're looking at question forty two?
Yeah.
Okay, so where I was going with that is if you add up all the people who wanted eight thirty or later, it adds up to approximately fifty six percent.
Um, but if, I guess the way I'm reading it is that forty one percent of people are happy at eight to three, are we okay?
That'd be a plurality. So the, the single biggest category was keeping it the same. But if you add up those who wanted to be later in some capacity, it adds up to majority.
Okay.
And if you look at the previous question, question forty, it's the same thing where. Forty seven percent want to keep it as is. But fifty three percent wanted to be later in some way, shape or form. Just see.
That doesn't mean all of that, the three percent will be happy if their particular time slot is. Yeah, that's the problem. The largest number of people will be happy to keep it from the eight to three.
Yes. And that's who we thought is to the interpretation issues where. Both those margins can be made or the biggest categories keep it the same. But adding up all the others indicate there's more appetite for a change. Right, all those were starting later. Quick summaries. Good to move on?
Yeah.
Now shifting to AI. There were mixed responses and strong feelings in many different directions about AI. But parents were generally supportive that AI should be taught in schools as appropriate and with proper barriers. But a lot of great comments on that particular subject. We've also made improvements. Um, if you look at the question, question fifty six about the biggest challenges in the schools. In both surveys several years apart, the balance of time commitments was exactly twenty nine percent. Across all schools going back multiple years, but there were large drops in mental health concerns for our children. And everything just fine improved quite a bit as well. In the question about what are your biggest academic concerns? Everything feels just fine is now the top answer. And as folks who are on the board at the time, they remember there were lots of concerns about curriculum and standardization across schools and subjects was a huge issue at the time. That has dropped substantially. As have concerns about class size, which dropped two thirds, ugly enough. In terms of student support, there were huge drops in concerns about stress and mental health and time management. As a top issue, that was forty three percent three years ago. Now it is thirteen percent.
Can I stop you? I mean, cause I was clapping for Robin, but we know that curriculum is in a very different place from where it was three years ago. And I just wonder, um, how, thinking back to the presentation we had earlier today and. The hub and these efforts to expand ways for students to learn and to do things and make their way through. The high school, which is probably the place of the greatest kind of intensity of emotions, um. Not to disparage middle school emotions, I remember well, uh, not my own, but. Uh, Julie, would you say that? You are seeing that change in. And are there other factors that might be influencing a change like that at the high school?
I think the regular ad supports, right? And we just live in the US report, but. We have really good negative ad support, so you don't have to just, and that's been growing, you don't have to, this is. Have five or four IP, there are places for that, um. You know, our counseling department is shifting a little bit to the ninth grade team. Um, versus their guests. I think that's been hopeful, uh. I'm thinking on the spot.
That's okay. I don't, I don't mean to stump you, but I think it's, it's good to sort of stop and think about the, as Pam. Said earlier, the why.
Yeah, and to get at that point, we will be, Rob and I will be sending this to the staff at the high school in, I think, roughly two weeks and change. And I think we're working on schedule in primary middle school right now, probably be watching this in maybe January, February.
Yeah.
Okay, can we move on?
Just being new, I'm just curious how long, like some of these. Three years ago with pandemic is such a unique, uh, like moment in time. I'm just curious how our faculty surveys go. To be able to have pre pandemic.
So to get at this level of detail and these surveys that were, I guess, prompted by, for the most part, that that was the first one.
Oh, okay.
But I would point out that that first survey was done in two thousand, spring of two thousand twenty two, so still. Two years post the initiation of the pandemic.
Yeah, I just, I mean.
Their master already done at that point and all that sort of case as well. So we done this, we did this in two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three and two thousand twenty five. And of the questions, maybe ten, fifteen have been repeated each time. But it also gets more like, one of the reasons I've done this is also the need of doing this on a regular basis. We'd see what's changed, like mental health and stress and what has stayed the same. Which leads me to the next question, which is concerns for your child during school. Everything feels just fine was at thirty four percent and across all the surveys over time. So that's a. Consistent thing, but there were large drops in concerns about pressure and intensity of academics of of social life. Of business of extracurriculars. So we've had improvements on there as well. For concerns outside of school, there were huge drops in concern for sleep and time management. But a new category that we added of concerns about the current political climate was one of our top choices and that we did not ask the board, should have. Uh, the final thing I wanted to point out, which is the question about five year initiatives. Where expanded practical subjects such as home economics and things like that was our most common that. Asked at thirty nine percent exactly on both times we asked this question. So I think there's something we might want to ponder there on how best to do that. I know that was a big J's as well back in this tenure. And inversely, but none of these seem important was also at seven percent each time we've asked that question. So I think there's a lot of support for how best to expand practical subjects and what that means. And I know that was the highest one at the elementary schools as well. Even though it's somewhat northern over type of class. Went through things very quickly. Haven't to talk about anything, but I know. Get too into the ones. Gina and I see a member of the show.
I have two communication ideas to take early bit. Um, one is it comes from doing employee engagement surveys and wanting to show action. So it's great that we've been communicating. Before the next survey, I would recommend doing a, since the last survey, you told us this, we've done this. Um, at like a month before, so I think it helps show all the action. Maybe that could come from the board and Robin together to help with the board comes. The other thing you might think I'm completely nuts, probably you anyway. I think it would be great to create a podcast version of your updates and um, I say this because Substack. Is really popular platform now and you can very easily add audio. You just can read what you wrote and a lot of people need to subscribe to it as a podcast and a lot of people when they're driving or walking can listen to your words and you might, we might have more people understand what we're doing. If we do that than just reading. I think people get drowned out by email. Yeah.
No, that's good.
And you have a really good voice. So.
And we have responses to both of those where. Communication piece, I'm fully in agreement with you. That's one of the things that I'm overdue onto craft that to the community. Where we're talking about things we've done as a result of this one and previous ones, things we've identified. The language to this survey, like introductory language and some of the questions actually have said, this has been identified as an issue and we have done this. What should we do now? Um, so we did get at that, but we have not done a separate like prelude to the survey coming out. I think that's a good idea as well. In response to your podcast issue, this is before your time on the board, we actually did do a podcast with the four chairs. It was Jay and Ford, so it was Kelly, myself. I believe it was Garrett and can be so, yeah, actually the four current chairs. Um, we did do that. I think we had three episodes. And it kind of petered out after that. I don't know what happens if it's a comps issue or a logistics issue.
I don't mean interviews. I mean literally Robin takes her newsletter and reads it and that's the podcast. And that's why if I don't read email, which is I guarantee more than fifty percent of the parents. Um, it's I can subscribe and listen to it and then I can listen to it. I'm driving to work or I'm driving to the co op. Or I can put my AirPods in up and go, but I don't want to talk to anyone and listen to Robin. I mean, so just be in your ear. It's a very humorous, very cheap thing to try. You would just need a microphone and you can try it and if it doesn't work, just. Also, you don't have to do it.
We got lots of comments about email. Many of the things, if it's not an email, I didn't read it. And so it's not, if I'm not going to go into school each year or whatever for my kid ever, I guarantee it versus I get one email a month and that's way too many. Stop bugging me. I hate you. You know, it kind of everything in. So, uh, Deb.
Well, I'm, I bet you could do an E L O with a student who was really interested in the tinkering and the microphones and the whole of that stuff.
Yes, I never. With E L O.
The person.
Yes, I'll get on. I heard E L O. It was like, oh, English.
Extended learning. Yeah, uh, Robin.
I'll just mention a couple of other things that have come out of these surveys and one is related to the mental health piece. We spent a lot of time with the nurses group. That was my K through twelve meeting that I've had for the past couple of years is with that group and they. Talked about, you know, we have gotten this feedback about mental health and the increases in needs for services and they were seeing it in the. Nursing department and we talked about earlier having a book study around the ancients. Generation and we actually did that with that nursing group last year to look at, you know. Really the research around cell phones and all of these things that we've been talking about and the impact that that has on mental health. And then they did end up doing some. Um, some workshops and things like that as a result of that book study last year. So that's just one thing. And then with A I this year, the tech department has taken that information too from the survey. And has been working even if you were taking the information on an A I policy. And also talking about how we teach about A I. So a lot of that has actually come from the survey too. So. I just want you to be aware that there are some other areas that we've looked at fairly closely in different departments and. Are making changes based on those things.
We also got comments from stupid A I. We got. Questions or not, we got free text comments from people who identify themselves as prominent experts in their relative kind of dark of neat fields. Offering to help us out on that regard as well. We got many fantastic comments from parents on this. If you scroll through the free text stuff, it's like a hundred and sixty pages or something like that of. Specific tangible helpful information. So we wanted to thank the parents as well for this. And what? When the last question we had, which was new this year was to actually ask the public, what questions should we be asking? We got lots of great feedback on that as well as sixty plus questions that Robin and I will go through again when we start crafting the next survey, we might live on springtime. So, um, Linda, do you have a question as well?
Absolutely. I don't know how clearly. Um, but one thing I was thinking about the N E S C experience, they did three surveys. Um, that we were obliged and they were freely offered to us and we can repeat them. And one, it was in many cases, the same questions. Some weren't, um, but it went to parents, it went to students and it went to staff. Yeah, and it was really interesting to see where there was agreement and when there wasn't, and if there wasn't, what did that mean? So this is a great thing to come from families. I really appreciate it, but then I'm wondering what would staff say or what would students say, given the same questions? Um, and then that sort of hinges on another thing that I I mentioned, um, actually in a meeting I was at this week. Way back when we had a quality of egg committee, the school board did that. Some of you may have remembered that or seen it. Robin, I think I've mentioned it before in our conversations. They, there was the whole board involvement was community involvement and what we looked at was qualitative and quantitative. Ways to look at what kind of quality, how do we measure what we're doing here? And I was on the qualitative one and we looked at like Victoria Bernhardt. Who is someone who looks at spheres of reference and sort of like, you know, the big idea is when you're looking at. You ask, you're trying to grow schools that are progressively improving. You look at data, but you also want to connect the results you're getting to the processes. In other words, your question then, what are we doing here? To see these changes that we're seeing. And so, you know, I immediately go to the students. They are actively talking about wellbeing. We, they got one, our one student with my council got a seven thousand dollar grant. You know, to to help build their wellness center. Uh, I see across the board, teachers thinking about learning. You heard it from E L O. It's like, how can we meet our students where they are? And talking about universal design and learning. I mean, I feel like there's been a whole shift. And intentionality about that, but what we're not getting at yet, I think is. You know, there's some certainly referencing N E S, but it's a tone to read. I'm afraid too much to say true. I'm trying to think how we can bring that and highlight the processes that have changed. To and reflect it. And then if we could also get input from students and staff too and see how there's correlation there. I think that would be great. And then another plug here is looking at our students who have already graduated. Julie, it used to be that survey where we would, and I keep going back to that because I think how many times it comes up in our conversations with. Talking to our graduates, our visa graduates and saying, so what do you, what are your, what is your perspective now that you left the high school? So.
All great comments, all, all.
Yeah, I know you've all loved that.
So, um, on the alumni one, I also would love to, I'd love to do sort of a sort of a out exit interview type surveys. How'd you learn it? And you graduated five years ago. How do things work off? We wanted to learn best, what do you wish you learned more of, et cetera? Um, so we have not done that to date. I would sort of be interested in doing that. In terms of staff, uh, you may not remember, but in the first survey we did in two thousand twenty two, we actually did offer it to staff. And we did not get much uptake, roughly thirty people across all four squares responded. So it, for us, it kind of muddied the waters a little bit. It wasn't too helpful. We got a lot of free text comments that were very interesting and very opinionated, which was very helpful for us to hear. A lot of, uh, quite a bit of sniping around individual other teachers that were named. That was interesting in a redaction sense. Um, and then for students, the state of New Hampshire is adding more and more restrictions for our abilities to reach out directly to students to fill out surveys. And so it needs to be more of an opt in parent permission type thing. So we didn't, we did that a little bit in the first server where some of our students replied, I think acting on behalf of their parents. Next to identify the sort of like I'm a senior or something like that, but we evaded away from that due to those legal concerns. I would share the interested to hear what they had to say, but it's a little tricky right now. But thank you for that comment. Any other questions on the surveys? Okay, feel free to reach out to me if you have any further questions or comments on existing or ideas for anyone.
I just want to stop for a minute. This is an extraordinary amount of. And I appreciate the fact that it's. Something you're good at and you do with your work sort of somehow related. No, even better. That you do these surveys, that you spend the time to pollate, redact information, present it in different forms. Prepare us to understand what we're looking at and then do your dog and pony show to different groups. Um, this isn't the first time you've done this with surveys and it's an extraordinary amount of time and I just want to thank you. You're here.
Yes.
And, uh, yeah, thank you all. Everyone good to move on? And now this is crying action. Um, I get a motion to do the expenditures, the minutes and the handbook. Hopefully fairly straightforward. If one wants to pull out the handbook, please let me know. Deb?
I moved to approve I D B through D. By consent. Was that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Second, second by Kelly.
One question, um. Do we need to say, I know we said a lot of, I think it was non substantive changes in the handbook. Do we need to specify as amended for that or not?
There's just some minor roots.
I thought so, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I think we're good on that front. That will probably, that might change for a different for policies.
Right, that's good.
Um, so although, so I note that Michael was with us online. Yes, since left, we've also lost Lisa and Garrett. They're dropping like flies tonight. Um, but so I think we can do and and vote a little hands up. Vote. So all those in favor? If all is unanimous, eight zero. Um, yeah. They cracked it.
Yeah, this language is really funny. I move to retire Elaine water. And appoint Lily Trayman as the deputy treasurer for the best of the school district.
Okay, all those in favor, hands up please. Again, unanimous, eight zero. Thank you everyone. And now for approval of the policies, I'll note there are seven of them. If any board member wished to withdraw or pull up those, please let me know. Um, there are seven as currently existing. I heard it as amended for J I C J. And the other one's got to not change.
I move to approve policy, the following policies, J I C J as amended. I M I P, G M I P, I M I P hyphen S A. G M I P hyphen F. G B G B A. And L D A is presented.
Nailed it. Thank you for that. Last second by Renee. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you everyone. We appreciate that. And lastly, one for the teenage. We knew that exact number. I have since lost it. It was five hundred something.
Uh, I moved to retain funds in the amount of five hundred and eleven thousand dollars to five hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Um, as presented.
Thank you for that. Second about Deb, all those in favor? There's also unanimous. Thank you everyone. Moving on to reports, um, the only thing I have to add apart from what we've talked about tonight is we will have a more detailed budget presentation on December sixteenth. I may or may not have a conflict that night is still to be determined. Um, so Neil, would you be able to chair that in my stead as needed?
Uh, for a small fee, yes.
All right, we can discuss that fee later, uh. Look, and additionally, um. Negotiations are moving as scheduled with the Dresden and Hanover service staff. It's a little early on, but I would say a steady progress and we'll leave it at that for now. When committee reports, I think we made some updates on C S D C. No? Sure?
Yes.
All right. That was definitive. I appreciate that. Any updates from council?
I think Linda did it all earlier.
Back to nine thirty ten is real close. Uh, Carrie, anything from you on H A C P C?
Yeah, um, Robert and I went, uh, was that Thursday of last week into H A C T C? And I see in your report that you also have some of the documentation. So I'll speak to things that you tell have highlighted. Um. They shared some fun updates of classes, which Robin has more to have, like the graduating class of last year and there they are. Um, talked about. Budget and, um. Sort of what the fees will, the tuition will look like next year and the hope is that it will be stable, but this meeting was on the twelfth and they hope to have. Those numbers by the end of the day, following day, the end of the week. We did not have those numbers yet, but they. Um, what'd they say? Seven point six percent increase for insurance. Um, but hoping that tuition was today about. Twenty K a kid is that? Yeah, um, which seems like it's a little bit, uh, pretty similar to what it has been. Yeah, um. Not a big change, um. Changes at the state level in terms of graduation requirements was discussed a bit, the two state, the states redistricting things that are happening, um. Yeah, just trying to figure out and it's just been unclear in terms of like what those graduation requirements are going to be and how the tech center can both support. And maybe incorporate what they're doing to help students get those graduation requirements and if requirements and if there are new ways in which the tech center. Could develop additional coursework, um. We talked for a while about, um. Uh, sort of just what the breakdown is in terms of enrollment and all the different programs and shared some of their documentation, which I am. Anyone who's definitely interested, um, you know, talk for a while about their STEM programs and why those numbers haven't been what they had hoped. They would be and how to best. Get the word out around their, you know, the engineering focused intensive work, um. Yeah.
You mean enrollment.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, like just, and we talked about, you know, like. A lot of schools have STEM programs and like, how do they differentiate what they can do and what they offer as a tech center and, um. One of the big things that I didn't realize is that the STEM program we can do for one year. So for seniors that are like sort of kind of done already. Um, doing STEM through the tech center could, and if they know they're going into engineering, could really build up that, um. Piece of work, but a lot of students don't realize that you can do it. As opposed to most tech center programs are the two year model.
The issues with the original thinking that the future consolidation stuff and they're not going to be centered around the tech centers and that I got pulled away.
Well, that was talked about as like something that had come and sort of gone, um, but this meeting was on Thursday and I think when was it yesterday or Friday that the, the news about the. Task force being pooh poohed or whatever, um, happened. So this was, this was free, the, uh, task center being, uh, the task force being, um. So I think there's, I, I mean, there has been continued conversation, um, going back to that. Yeah, sorry, instead it could go back to that now.
Uh, that was your.
I just wondered if we're, um, if the calendar came up for any conversation.
Yeah, um, I didn't miss that. Um, yeah, and the talk about the start date being August thirty first, I think there's a couple of things that come up. Is that. Uh, Woodstock, Woodstocks District, Mountain View, um, they have in their teacher contract that they can't start more than three days before Labor Day. Um, but Labor Day is really late this year. And so starting on the thirty-first means that that first week of school is a full week, which is very different than what many districts have done recently, which is the three-day week and the four-day week and the, um, but Labor Day being so late is really, so Erica, the director was going back to the, you know, that was sort of, um, because I sit on administrative meetings in Hartford District. I know that like that came out of the Hartford, lots of conversations in Hartford. Um, so yeah, she was going back to the drawing board to bring that to the Hartford team tomorrow.
It was less about the start date and more about that February vacation that has thrown us off. Now requiring us to have a Saturday. Comfort. I mean, it, it really.
Actually, I think a lot of folks are gonna assume that day.
The February break that moved later to align with the rest of Vermont, which
It did.
That's staying the same.
Same this year.
Yeah, it is staying the same. So it would be people would not have.
The last week of February and
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah. That's, that aligns with many more districts on the other side of the river.
Which remind me for the February presentation to the town one where they could do an auditorium. Is that a meeting where we require a quorum?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Yes. It's a meeting of the board. So, yeah. So I've already heard that so much people will be gone. For context, that is the second Saturday of winter vacation of the February break. And it's a warning. So, right? Is that February twenty eighth?
Yeah, Neil, you brought this up.
So I think the issue is, and it would typically be, I think, on a Thursday night.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, but if the Thursday night falls over vacation week and it gets moved to, uh, it gets moved. Um, but I think the move didn't really help much because there's still less are going to be on vacation. Yeah. I brought all this up before. Not a bad idea.
Yep.
Right.
We are.
But I think as part of that bringing it up, I think we realize like we don't have legally many options because of the likes, there's strictures about like when you have it in relationship to something, right? I think there was some constraints.
Like three days before sire or something like that. Yeah.
Actually, as we have it as Hanover at eleven thirty AM and Dresden is twelve thirty PM on Saturday, February twenty. Not physically present. I don't guess there might be a few of them.
Can we do it by noon?
No, I do not believe.
No, definitely not. The sad thing is that we never get more than maybe half a dozen people. From the public.
It's a Saturday.
Yeah. Just sacrifice.
So something for us all to ponder.
That's why I was hoping that maybe we could get some grace from Hartford.
It's not, I mean, um, I mean, I, I think it aligns with.
Oh, oh, absolutely. Yeah, I understand. I was just hoping. I wasn't being realistic. I was just hoping you were gonna say, oh, they don't like that.
They want it to be the only district.
Gina. Uh, and empathy point is the reason that Vermont is a week later is so that people in Vermont who work in the retail and the ski and the hospitality can actually enjoy their state on a week when Massachusetts and Connecticut, New Hampshire are not there, which when I heard that, I think that's actually like kind of a nice thing to, I don't know. I, I like it as a Vermonter that we like. Except that New Hampshire doesn't have the same week. But no one else in Vermont is a joint school with New Hampshire. That's like our problem, not Vermont. Yeah, I'm just saying that. Yeah. But I think there are a lot of bits about representation.
I mean, the big, the big conversation was the start date and the holiday, the two-week holiday too. That's another tension point, like some districts want the two weeks and some don't. Yeah. And that allows for different flexibility as well as all the districts that go to the tech center have different numbers of PD days and just different things written into contracts that are really different.
Folks remember our calendar survey toward and related to these previous surveys. There was, I think, some healthy appetite, right? One, two-week vacation rather than two one-week vacations for February and April.
Oh, like the March, like.
March intensive, if you would.
Yeah. Well, I think again, Hartford is in a negotiation year, which also impacts, so they can't, those numbers around tuition certainly will have to do it. And they're negotiating everybody's contract. All letters this year, so.
Probably trying to know more than it's on, sure. Wishing committee, I'm not sure if any of you've met in the past month.
So I was just thinking, sadly, that we probably have to dial that up at some point. This budget, but the first sort of reveals the tuition and having a little year.
There are some.
Should it is. So I think, um, we should.
And there are some non-public face doing that I think will come up and probably in a month, maybe January, that will come to some further discussion with the committee. Nothing there. We're happy to move on to superintendent's report.
Yes. And I did actually add some more information about Hartford, um, based on our meeting with them. I asked Erica to look at the Hanover students specifically, and I included that in the report. And this also relates to what we talked about um, regarding student surveys. So these students were surveyed at the end of their experience. And you can see at the end, they talk about the internships that our students from Hanover did as well as what the class of two thousand twenty-five is currently doing, those who attended the um, career technical center. And then they also surveyed parents to find out their satisfaction level too. But we had twenty students who engaged in thirteen work-based learning experiences, twenty-six industry-recognized credentials, earned sixty college credits, twenty-three memberships and student leadership organizations. And then the other information. So I did want to share that with you. Um, also, I mentioned that our Hanover meeting that I did meet with our town manager recently in Hanover. So I'm trying to open communications along those lines. And, um, we talked about some really important things for our school district, including cell service in this area and the work that they're doing. I've connected him to our technology department so we can collaborate on some of these conversations and, um, connected with them about Simbilly recently as follow-up to our Hanover meeting. And, um, also we are continuing our work with the leadership team. This month we met at Marion Cross on Monday and we looked at engagement data. And I'll be sharing some of that data with you too, because one of the things that I'm happy to say over time that we're seeing as we do these walkthroughs in each of the schools is we are seeing very high levels of engagement. That's what we're finding in the data. And we talked about that over and over on Monday with the, um, with the leadership team members who are in classes observing. So I think that's really very positive. I'm trying to give that feedback also back to the schools and to the staff members so that they know, you know, we are doing this as a practice, learning, gathering data, and then these are the results so that they can see what's actually happening too. Um, I did attend a superintendent's meeting in New Hampshire on Friday and we've been spending a lot of time talking about New Hampshire legislation this year. And as you all know from my updates that I've been sending you, there is a lot of discussion about open enrollment and you know, what we will need to do and looking toward that over the next couple of years. And also again, on the New Hampshire side, the S A U consolidation. I have been consulting with our attorney about that. We consulted with them last year about the Vermont changes. And I think it will be similar in New Hampshire based on our congressional um, agreement. So I'll keep you updated on those things. I've been preparing for snow dummies. I don't want to think that, but I just wanted to have everything in order. So I was prepared for snow days. I sent it out in the newsletter last month, but I've connected with both the, um, the town people to have their phone numbers, you know, we'll connect at five in the morning. I'll get an update from them about the road situation. And then we'll be able to make call from there with the, with our bus um, transportation company. And then also just, I've been running through the scenarios and loading everything right here. And I think the television crews know and things like that. So that's all underway. We had a meeting today to, you know, just go through the whole process again. So I want to be well-prepared for that. And that's my report for tonight.
Thank you for that. Any questions for our superintendent?
I know you're all excited about snow days. I'm not this year.
Interim director for curriculum and instruction, Emre.
Well, I'll just say everything, like really glad that we didn't have to make our first delay or snow call when Robin was out. Really attending to the weather forecast and luckily didn't have to get very nervous at any particular point. We would have made it there, but.
And I've been watching for like two weeks.
February may be a different story. We'll figure it out then. Um, so I chose to take tonight to, uh, sort of frame what has become kind of a natural buckets of work that I've been reporting on, um, in each of the board meetings previous to this one. Um, and so I took all of those themes and buckets and then decided to update you and formalize, um, my goals for the year so that you know how I am measuring my progress, um, in this position. And also how Robin can offer me support and feedback, um, in meeting these goals under this position. So I would be happy to answer any questions about these goals, but you can expect in the future that I'll continue to report in each of these categories as pertinent for each of the meetings that I'm a part of. Um, and then you'll get a formal report towards the end of the year as well.
Thank you for that, Lauren. Um, I did have one minor question about revitalizing the safety committee.
Yes.
With such a sugar excitement. Um, is that, is that the board safety committee that has board members on it and we reconstitute it? Or is that internal safety committees? I think there's been both off and on, right?
Right now internal. Yes. Um, two different things are happening. So one is at the S A U level. Um, just like at all of the school levels, uh, there is a specific safety team. We have an emergency operations plan. And so the things that are functioning, um, under that for the S A U, but then similarly, we've also revitalized our joint laws committee that falls under that as well. And I'm working, uh, with Amy on that project too. So multifaceted, but not board level at this point.
Unless you really want.
It's on both of them. So I, I don't know if I need another one. Thank you for that, thank you. Any other questions for Lauren?
Do we do tabletop exercises in this school district, like a Dartmouth East?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, we do.
They did one really recently.
Got some others planned, both at the individual schools and then bring you, bring you back together.
Thank you, Lauren, as always. Do you know, Teresa, any further updates from the V A S office or are you good over there?
Uh, no, just, um, we did get the adequacy, um, uh, numbers and everything else on Friday.
Okay.
Um, so our, our particular adequacy aid is like seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So well, um, you're at like seven hundred and forty-one thousand this year. So, and, um, then our tax rate was that, that's what it's gonna say. All on Friday.
Initial takeaways, make us smile, make us frown, make us cry.
It's off my bills online today.
All right. Any questions for Teresa? Thank you. We look forward to hearing more. There is a minor right where there's no need for a non-public.
Correct.
I'm somewhat surprised for so few of us. Right. We're back in public. We have a second opportunity for public comment. Anything that was not further discussed already? Seeing none. If you have any agenda topics for the next meeting, maybe send it to Neil, depending on how often I get. And the next meeting is Tuesday, December sixteenth. There are other school events going on that you might want to check your calendar just in case. And that is the, the last Tuesday of the, before winter break. I'm staying. So lots of things going on in that time period. Otherwise I'll take a motion to adjourn at nine thirty-one, which probably isn't too bad given all that we talked about tonight. Gina.
I moved to adjourn at nine thirty-one.
Seconded by Carrie going around the board, starting with Neil.
Oh, no, yes.
Deaconia, yes. Sullivan, yes. Yelson, yes. Russell, yes. McConnell, yes.
And Keeney, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. We got through a lot.
Thank you, everyone.